So we will call to order the Planning Commission meeting Monday, May 6, 2019 at 7:30. And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, roll call, please.
Mr. Zenya.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Laurent.
Here.
Mr. Riegard.
Here.
Mr. Zabel.
Here.
Mr. Van Portfleet.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds is excused.
We have quorum. So approval of agenda. Any motion?
I move to approve. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Approval of minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of April 1st, 2019.
I move to approve the minutes from planning April 1st, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? Minutes all good? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Public comments on non-agenda items. So nothing but we're having on the public hearing. Public comments on non-agenda items. All right, without any said, we'll move on to new business, which we have a public hearing. So do we need to close or suspend our meeting to go to the public?
No, you can just go to the public.
Okay. All right. So, okay, so then I guess we just officially open the public hearing. And this will be our time for our public comments. Would anyone like to make any comments?
Excuse me, we'll first have our presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Laura.
That's okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. The application before you is for a special land use at the existing building at 195, 197, and 199 South Broadway Street, which is located in the DC Downtown Center District. The proposed use is technically defined as a bar and entertainment restaurant that does not completely occupy a freestanding building and thus requires the special land use, which triggers the public hearing notification of property owners and review and approval, excuse me, recommendation by the Planning Commission to Village Council. The applicant is proposing to occupy the tenant space in this building and construct an exterior patio and outdoor deck for seasonal seating. The review starting on page 14 of your packet outlines the eight different standards that are required per Section 1903 of the zoning ordinance. In general, we do find compatibility with the special land use standards. I think it's important to note that the special land use review for bars and entertainment restaurants was likely developed with the intent to safeguard multi-use buildings in the downtown district that had residential tenants. As it is worded, it was triggered with this review, but because there are no residential tenants in this multi-tenant building, and it is not adjacent to any residential districts, we do find compatibility with the special land use criteria. We do recommend that the applicant, as it is located in the DC District, work with the DDA director administratively to handle outstanding items. But it is our recommendation that, including the fact that there are no public comments this evening from adjacent property owners, that the Planning Commission recommend approval to Village Council for approval of the special land use conditional upon compliance with their approved site plan. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you, Laura. So now our applicant's presentation.
If you want me to go after you, talk to them, that's fine. But I'm Molly, I'm the Executive Director for the Downtown Development Authority, and I just wanted to briefly talk about connections. This is a restaurant that is going to be right at the very start of our downtown district, and we've, along with Valentinos. But these guys are going to, because of the way their business is designed, they're going to connect our pedestrian and bike paths, they're going to attract people from the docks, and it just, the nature of this business is going to start creating some connections that, on that end of town, we haven't had in the past, and I'm very excited about that. So I'm here to tell you that I, as the DDA staff person, I'm going to do what I can to help them, whatever it is that you guys are, if you have any concerns about their design, we're, we've been talking to them the whole time, and we'll continue supporting them and helping them out.
Thank you.
Jason Pelletier, General Manager, and of Otsoto Lake Orion, also Lake Orion Village resident, 136 North Axford. Two and a half years ago, my wife and I moved to this village, and we embraced it, loved it, and when an opportunity came around to open what my dream and passion is, is a craft beer gathering place in the village I live in with my partner, Danny Fox, I couldn't pass it up. With the help of Molly, we were able to get in touch with the Reards and find what I feel is a perfect building for that. Every village, town, city, building that we looked at, nothing was quite right until we found this one, and right next to the bike path is key for me. I and my partner are avid cyclists, we've been out riding all the time, and we look forward to embracing that part of it, making us, us as an entry point to the village and the exit point from the trail, bike parking that is not just for our guests, for everyone who's entering the village, putting up, I'm working on partnering with Main Street Bikes to put up a bike fix-it station, and to help people out, embracing the community, letting them in, fill up their water bottles, use our restrooms. It'll be open to all, not just our patrons. A lot of notes in here as far as, you know, the questions, like I say, we'll be happy to address any issues, or any, you know, further decor or structural things that we need to do to make sure we're in lieu, or in line with the village plan. We look forward to going forward and opening Otsoto Lake Orion.
Okay, thank you. Comments, questions?
Do you want to close the public hearing?
Well, actually, I don't think technically we opened the public hearing yet, right?
We.
The presentation's first.
Well, on the special land use, that's normally how we do it, but we can open the public, for public comment now, if you'd like.
Absolutely. All right, so we will open the public hearing for public comments and questions. And none being forthwith. Any written communications?
There are no written communications.
All right. With that said, we will close the public hearing and move on to deliberation amongst ourselves. Is there, would that be correct? Any questions, comments? You need a commission?
I think Robert's rules generally make a motion first and then deliberate.
Normally what we do is now, we have the planner present the site plan, and then we do the approval of the special land use with the site plan. So it would be appropriate now to hear the comments from the planner about the site plan, and then, and then have your deliberation, and then make your motion.
Okay. Laura, back to you.
Thank you. I'll briefly cover the outstanding items, and the applicant and myself did discuss these last Friday, and some have since then been addressed. So I'll briefly go through, starting on page 18 of the packet. So the first are some delineation of the property lines and dimensions. It appears that the site can be in compliance with these minimum standards, we just want to make sure, so we're requesting that administratively, that those be reviewed for compliance. On page 19, we discussed alternative materials for the deck, they are proposing a cedar. We wondered, Wine Social had utilized a Trex material, which is made out of recycled composite, and a bit more durable. The applicant stated that they weren't interested in Trex due to the additional cost at this time. The benefit with Trex is, or a hardier product is then, that there's less maintenance down the road, but that is a discretionary item for the Planning Commission. The third outstanding item is the proposed deck extends over Paint Creek, in keeping with the environmental sustainability standard of the ordinance. If there's any opportunity for this area to have environmentally sensitive design due to the proximity to the watershed, then we would recommend that, and that could also be finalized administratively.
Is that the back deck?
Pardon me?
Is that the one on the back of the building?
Back or the side?
Well, there's two, there's the side and the back.
On the, the southern portion.
South, okay.
Between the building and the bike path. The bike makes the turn.
All right, I just want to know, can we, the deck does not.
Go ahead. Yeah, please.
The deck does not extend over the water, it's on the side of the building, so it doesn't interfere with the water at all.
It's on the south side.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
The outstanding number, item number four is to prepare a landscape plan, which details the types of material. There are plantings that are shown in the render, just requesting that this be detailed on the site plan. And the applicant has stated that they would like to do some plantings, they're working with the DDA on the street tree, and will continue to coordinate, as this is, as Molly stated, a, the primary entrance into the DDA northbound. In terms of the building design and the architectural character, the applicant has clarified that the natural brick stone, or natural brick masonry will remain with this project, and that the grizzly gray paint sample may be utilized on the vinyl siding, but not on the brick, and we are appreciative of this, as Michigan Main Street, one of their tenants is to leave the natural brick, if in good condition. In terms of the dumpster enclosure, the applicant has indicated that they are interested in constructing, and if it were to not be masonry material, we're recommending that that material is further discussed with the Planning Commission this evening, and that that could be finalized administratively with the village and DDA. The applicant also stated regarding the awnings, that the existing awnings have been removed, and it's still undetermined if they will replace them at this time, but if they do, they shall be mounted no higher than one foot below the first floor cornice, they have agreed to comply with that. In terms of parking, one, the formula applied is one parking space per three persons during the max occupancy. The applicant has clarified that there are 75 seats available in the restaurant with 12 employees on the maximum shift at any given time. There are 21 spaces located in the building's parking lot currently, and the overflow would be able to do on-street parking or within the DDA's parking lot at Children's Park. As the applicant stated earlier, it is intended that patrons, pedestrian, and cyclists would likely utilize this establishment, and they are providing bike parking out front to help serve to, to those patrons. We are recommending that they work with the DDA on the bike rack selection, just so that it fits in more with the identity and theme of the DDA, which they have agreed to. And then lastly, just to make it clear, that the renders do show signage, but the applicant has stated that they are not looking for approval of any signage, that that'll be done through a separate application at a later date. So with those items addressed, we recommend that the Planning Commission, you know, provide some, some direction on the streetscape and landscaping, but that they continue to work with the DDA to address those items administratively, and provide the revised drawings with those dimensions for administrative approval. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Laura. So with that, do we have a motion?
I have a couple of questions.
Questions?
On the landscaping, are we going to do the south side of the bike path too, so when you're sitting on, out on the deck, you know, there's a building there, and is that going to be nicely cleaned up?
Hello again. Yes, we intend on making it landscaping, landscaping both sides all around, whatever we need to do, clean up around the fence, plant, plant where necessary, planters out front, possibly, you know, a couple benches for people to sit at, but definitely going to do some landscaping.
Okay.
So, is it the first step not to consider special land use? That's what your first letter indicates, that there was a recommended motion to approve special land use? Is that not the first one?
You're correct. The, the first item for consideration would be the Planning Commission's recommendation to council for the special land use.
And I would like to make that recommendation, or that motion at this time.
Our support.
Okay, so moved, supported. Any further comment, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay.
Carers?
So, and then, Mr. Chair, item B would be the special land use approval and site plan approval, we just did the special land use, so site plan approval would be next, correct?
Correct.
But as I read the documents, you need to have a revised site plan.
We're requesting a revised site plan with those additional notes, so for instance, the dimensions provided administratively to check for compliance.
But you also had in your letters that there was, I think it wasn't even a surveyed document, stake document that shows proper setbacks, you said those dimensions, and you say, "We believe that it's set back properly," but, so we're going to prove something that we just believe? I mean, you haven't reviewed yet, you haven't seen it, it just, it's odd to me.
Well, from scaling the document from the survey, it appears that the building and the decks would be in compliance, but we would want the actual engineer to correctly identify that on the drawing. If it was not in compliance, then it would require a variance.
So it's to be determined at this time that it's.
Okay, now I.
So, could it be contingent upon?
Yeah.
Being in compliance?
It sounds like we're looking for approval to directly approve the site plan with some items to be finalized by DDA or by the owners before Village Council is called on the hold on, correct?
Approval of the site plan just requires Planning Commission.
Right, right, but the entire package will go before Village Council.
Correct. And there's a confidence level that we can say, you know, we're almost there at the finish line, but as, as we are not preparing the drawings ourselves, we cannot 100% say that they meet the, the standards.
Fair.
Okay, so I'll make that second motion as well for site plan approval, and I'm sorry, I'm having a lot of trouble with this.
Just keep it shut off.
I've got the five-minute rule one here, but I keep using it, so it stays on, but I know it's a recommended motion there, and that also covers the contingency questions that we just discussed. So per the planner's recommendation, I, I make motion that we approve site plan approval.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
And the one question, Mr. Chair, that comes up is, and again, I'm trying to get back to where I was at, is that parking lot recommendation, the 50% approval, that needs to be reviewed yet, in my mind, because there was a parking committee meeting prior to this meeting, and I recall that we had made commercial businesses in downtown exempt from parking years ago. So where does that stand today? And we need to just consider that 50% rule, because, Mr. Young, would you like to comment? I see you're kind of.
Well, I'm just saying that our planner indicated that it's something we will review and determine to the what extent is necessary to clarify that issue and bring it back.
So that'll come back to us?
Yes, yes.
Just mentioning it.
Yeah.
Okay.
What you're saying is, there's no, the commercial does not have to provide parking in the downtown district, so the question of whether the lot is usable 50%, or whatever you want to call it, technically, it doesn't have to provide parking. And at least that building provides some parking, and the children's parking lot isn't far away, so it probably provides more parking than any other business in the downtown district.
Actually, the fire department lot would be perfect for them, just come out there and go across the bridge. That would work perfect.
With all that said, light at the end of the tunnel for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess we're going to move on. Don't know if you want to sit through the rest of our meeting. So now I, Laura, do we have your McKenna's monthly report?
Yes, included in your packet is the April monthly report that has all the permits and the status of the Planning Commission items. As always, if you have any questions, please let us know on these projects. As I'm sure you're aware, Jennifer Neal is going on maternity leave soon, and I think some of you are familiar with Erin, she helped out on the 2017, I believe, Parks and Recreation Master Plan Update, and during Jennifer's maternity leave, Erin will be here at the village doing the onsite office hours, and is very familiar with office hours in other communities, including Oakland County communities, so if you have any question for Erin, please let us know, her email here at the village will be the same as Jennifer's, those owning email. Thank you.
And I have business cards, I'll pass them all out to you at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. So with that said, are we into old business?
Excuse me, we need a motion to receive and file that report.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Motion?
Motion to receive the McKenna report as submitted.
And.
Support.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right, old business, short-term rental ordinance review. Is this Laura, or, go ahead, Laura.
Thank you.
Oh, it's dumpster.
So as it was discussed at the April Planning Commission meeting, the draft ordinance was presented, and feedback from the Commission was received, which was then relayed to the village attorney, and her comments are provided in the packet starting on page 48, and I'll briefly go through those and how they have been addressed. The first comment was a request to revise the definition of bedroom to minimize potential loopholes. This is now shown at the top of page 51 of your packet, and now states that bedroom will be defined as the current State of Michigan Building Code, as amended from time to time. So if that definition should change in the future, this would reflect that latest definition. The second item the village attorney considered was adding language to the number of persons anticipated to sleep within each bedroom, and language has also been added on packet page 51. The application now must also state the number of persons anticipated in each room, not just the number of bedrooms and their square footage. The third item has to do with allowing additional inspections by the village. So at the top of page 52, the draft ordinance now reads that the applicant, at the time of requesting a short-term rental, must provide a statement of consent to allow the village to inspect the property from time to time if the village receives a complaint that the property is not in compliance with all codes and regulations. Item number four was adding additional language to require a copy of the Good Neighbor Guide to be provided and signed at the time of each new renter to the property. This is also shown on, on packet page 52. And the new language states that the Good Neighbor Policy must be provided and signed by both the owner and renter each time a new renter occupies the property. The fifth item was the addition of or revocation to the last sentence that reads, "Delinquencies on any such payments to the village, regardless of whether they relate to the rental unit for which a rental unit permit is sought, shall result in denial or revocation of the permit." And lastly, there was a request to reduce the number of incidences prior to taking action from five to three separate instances, excuse me, and that has been shown on packet page 53. So those were the, the main changes to the draft ordinance, but the village attorney also has advised, as noted on 49 of the packet, a quote from her email, "I strongly recommend, as the short-term rental ordinance is developed, that we also develop a mirrored version of regulatory ordinances of long-term and month-to-month rental as well. It would be easy for a property owner to argue an infringement on their ability to use their private residence in any way they wish, when no other rental properties are regulated within the village. I believe that we can reduce exposure to liability greatly by treating all rental properties similarly, and demand similar actions in order to receive a permit to rent any property in the village. The goal of regulating rental properties is, of course, health, safety, and welfare. To that end, it makes sense that all rental properties, whether short-term, month-to-month, or long-term, are regulated in order to ensure compliance with all applicable codes." Pending any additional Commissioner feedback on the draft ordinance, and per the guise of the village attorney, we do also recommend the creation of a companion ordinance if the village is intent on regulating short-term rentals. And we can provide that information to the village attorney in order to move forward, and we're happy to take your direction. Thank you.
I just noticed, this might be a typo or missed on, let's see, it's package page 53, which actually says four at the bottom, and it's the five separate incidents that's crossed out to three separate incidents, occurring on three separate days.
Three separate days. Thank you.
All right, so is there a discussion?
I have a couple of comments.
Yeah.
I think that there's not enough clarity in the village attorney draft ordinance, because it says, "May visit from time to time." Let's say I own the property, and I violate, and you say, "May visit," it should say, "Has to have," or, let's see, what would be, "Has the right to enter the premises within seven days' notice," and inspect, with a timeline, because what's time to time? Time to time would be, okay, we're going to be over there on Tuesday, well, I'm not there, you can't come. Time to time would be, okay, we're gonna be over there on Tuesday. Well, I'm not there. You can't come. Well, we're gonna be there Tuesday. Well, it says time to time.
It also implies to me that it has to be driven by a complaint.
That is the way it has been worded, correct?
Yeah. I mean, if we see something, if the neighbor sees something or has a concern, do they have to allow as a formal complaint that the village become involved?
Commissioners, I know that we've gone back and forth on this ordinance for some time now, and I think that there still is the larger question, the elephant in the room, on whether all rentals are regulated or not. And perhaps it would be most helpful if the council and the planning commission had a joint session with the attorney present and just came to consensus before moving forward.
What kind of consensus?
I think there's two things. From the beginning, the commission has expressed that this ordinance be stringent. And we have tried to convey that, but I think that there is still some uncertainty among the commissioners on if that is strong enough. So that would be one aspect. And then the second would be if the village is interested in regulating all rental properties, not just short-term, and the timeline for this process moving forward. Because as the village attorney has advised, creation of just the short-term rental, she has written that it leaves the village too open.
I agree with that. Yeah, but I look at this as stringing it out. We have a problem. I don't know, you said, it appears as if some of the commissioners aren't sure. I think everybody here is sure if we're going to act or not. But I treat this as a separate ordinance, if you will. I agree that we need to look at longer rentals. But as long as we are in deliberation and have that on our books as far as study and moving it forward, you can't cry discrimination, because we're reviewing it, and we're gonna do something about it. And so I agree that we should move forward with that. Because part of what I'm trying to say is, okay, we're looking at short-term rental right now, and we're gonna look at the larger picture. It'll be six months before we do anything with this, if not longer. And I'm still in favor of even just saying, no short-term rentals allowed on the lake. And I keep asking the question, Joe and I have been told that other communities have done that. Boom, and that's it. Now, there was state legislation last week that was before the House of Representatives or the Senate to make it illegal for a community to do that. My understanding is it didn't pass. There was too much discussion about the communities and how it affects adjoining property owners. And they saw it as being a bigger battle than what the Michigan Association of Realtors, who sponsored the bill, had decided, and they pulled it off the floor and didn't vote on it, is what I read today. I'm not sure of the accuracy. If anybody else knows, let me know. But this is a bigger fish to fry. It could take a long time for us to work through our number of rentals that are in our community, because there's a lot, and they're everywhere. But the short-term is an immediate problem and issue that I'd like to see us still seek a quicker resolution to that problem.
We have the joint session we proposed is to speed that up and get to a resolution between the planning and the council.
But they're gonna...
Rental season is upon us. We presented last, what, when was it, at the last council meeting?
But we're gonna spend a lot of time looking at the equality of the two. And so that's gonna take a lot of debate. And we have the power to do short-term rental guide, guidance. Go ahead, Mr. R.
Yeah, I pondered this quite a while myself, and I just think it's gonna come back and bite us. And I don't think we should allow the short-term rentals, because the houses are on top of each other. The lot of them wouldn't pass a real inspection. A lot of them have decks on them, you know. I don't care what kind of ordinance you pass, you're gonna find them bringing in 20, 30 people, and these decks are gonna crash down. We're just gonna have a lot of big issues. So unless you're gonna write an ordinance that's gonna make it so difficult that they have to have extreme inspections and that they pay extra for our police to go and go down there when they're renting them and seeing they're not causing issues, I just think that we're gonna write something that's gonna come back and bite us, and that's the way I believe.
Right. Where if the alternative, that would be just say, not allowed. Now, we don't have interpretation. We don't have a lot of the issues. And then we spend our time looking at the equality situation in the longer-term rental. I don't want to spend a lot of time trying to think this through. We've got residents already that are complaining. They pay a lot of tax dollars to have a home here. Cost of living is expensive here. And to have that compromised by short-term rentals, people that come in for a few days that really don't have any respect for the adjoining property owners and utilization of our community, they say, well, they're going to bring in tax dollars. They're gonna bring in money. They're gonna go to the restaurant and eat. I can't guarantee that. I don't see the benefit. So going back to what you said, I'm not sure that the commissioners here are unsure about whether or not we should do something about short-term rentals. I think that we all are. Mary, our attorney, has got some good points. But I don't think that we need to step back and put two, the long-term rental and the short-term rental together. To me, that's gonna be very difficult, very long. And then there was a third point that you made. Now, there was something else.
The harshness of the ordinance?
Pardon?
That I feel as if there's a disconnect between how harsh the planning commission and perhaps even the community wishes to see this ordinance, how stringent, and the language that's been developed by the village attorney. And since this isn't, it deals with the planning commission and land use regulation, of course. But the way that this ordinance has been prepared is that this is part of the general code of ordinances and not a, an amendment to the zoning ordinance. So this, if the commission finds this favorable with some specific recommendations, this could be recommended to the village council for consideration, where it would have the first reading and the second reading, and would not have to have a public hearing at the planning commission level.
The current short-term rental agreement?
Correct. I was also looking up quickly, Jennifer had done a search of other municipalities in Michigan that had banned short-term rentals. It was difficult to find a community that had done just an outright ban. It appeared more frequent that communities would ban in certain districts. So for instance, the city of Detroit's in 2018, their short-term rental ordinance banned only in select districts. Mackinac City banned in certain districts in 2017. The city of Holland restricted short-term rentals for any new, new, they grandfathered in existing, but any new facilities were regulated to certain districts, and the same for Traverse City.
And so going back to my comments about doing a short-term rental, banning them on the lake, that's not excluding the whole community. That's just a designated area, much like you just suggested.
The lake residential, correct?
Boom. And then we can step back and take a look at this and figure it out as to how deep we want to go and how it's going to mesh with the long-term rentals. Because I know there's great debate right now, too, at the state level about, is this a commercial business or not? You've heard that, right?
Yes.
Yes. And some of those statements are, it's no different than a hotel or a motel, and they're commercial businesses. Why are the short-term rentals not commercial businesses under consideration? And do you allow commercial business to operate within a residential district?
And not collect sales tax or other...
Correct, correct. So that's a whole nother discussion. So I'm more in favor of protecting the residents in our community and doing something as soon as possible, such as a designated prohibition.
I guess I missed a couple of meetings due to some health issues, which I apologize. And I'm not sure what was covered. But I'm pleasantly surprised to hear the planning commission speak up multiple people about potentially banning short-term rentals, I assume, under 30 days on the lake. I go back to the residents that came and made a heartfelt plea to having their peace and tranquility ruined for multiple weekends for bachelor and bachelor parties. And I have family members on the lake, and we enjoy their company and their social get-togethers. It's a difficult environment to have parties and to have people over. And there's a lot of respect and a lot of intimacy involved between neighbors on the lake that I see as, you know, and I've lived on a lake in a different county. It's a challenge. So I would, I guess I would just sum it up by saying, I would be in favor of at least a temporary ban until this got worked out in greater detail. I know you're gonna make a couple of people angry, but I think you're gonna make the lake happy. So I'll just leave it at that. I'd be supportive of a ban.
Is that a motion?
Well, I think you just make it lake and lake access properties.
Right.
That will solve the problem.
What does that do on the property that is not in the village? Can we say that for the entire lake?
I don't think we have jurisdiction over that.
We can't control the township.
I don't either. So we could say that for the village piece of the lake. And the other side of the lake could contend.
That's all that's in front of us, though, right?
Well, it is, and we can only protect our jurisdiction and the people that are taxpayers. We have no governing, yeah, so...
That's a good point, though.
And we started talking the lake.
Right, right.
We're gonna talk about our property.
I'm thinking of ours.
But what is it, about 70% of the lake is in the village? Mr. Young?
Well, one thing, just thinking of this ordinance here, for example, we could say, zoning-wise, short-term rentals are not allowed in the RL zoning district, which means they would be allowed in the RV district. So we can incorporate that in this ordinance, can't we? Or no, this is the code, this is the code, not a zoning one. So we could amend, we need to adopt an ordinance on short-term for the other non-lake properties. But we could say, in zoning-wise, you cannot have short-term rental on RV property, RL, meaning residential lake property. Is that a possible way?
If this ordinance before you, this draft ordinance specified that short-term rentals were not permitted in the RL zoning district, then this would suffice.
Yeah, there's a problem with that. Because at the, our last VCA meeting, the house that Jamie Holstra was building is actually, what was it, it's multiple residential or multiple use or something like that.
But that's long-term, not short-term.
No, I'm not talking about that. But I'm saying it's a house right on the lake. So it could be short-term.
Not if this ordinance is in it, huh?
Yeah, but I don't know if RL covers everything on the lake.
Yes, it does. As a zoning district for all property that has waterfront, it's RL. Let me get the zoning map and show you. Anything on the water, zone RL residential.
Okay, there's a not zone RL, because that would be...
Well, if it's across the lake, then there's...
No, it's right on Park Island.
We're building one on the lake right now that's on mixed use. So there's a few.
Well, just saying.
I just need that overlooked.
You can't preclude it in one unless you allow it somewhere else, because right now you just can't say...
Right.
We don't allow, technically, we don't have any regulations on short-term rentals, anyway.
And this is an example of how long it could take when we start getting into peeling it back and looking at what we need to make sure we cover. It can be a six-month or a full-year process. And I'd like to see and stay on course with, much like Member Hammond's recommendation, my recommendation, yours too, Mr. Young, at least an RL. And that's a good point about access and/or access, because there's access, kind of like keyhole right now that exist, that should not be short-term rentals as well.
But the main issue was on the lake.
Correct.
Residential on the lake. Mixed use, it can be...
No, I understand that.
It can be a whole...
So you're saying that where it's commercial on M24, it could happen there, because maybe they'll build a hotel, and that would be classified as a short-term rental.
But it won't be in the residential area, zone area, which is the problem area.
It may only affect a few lots, but there may be a few places on the lake that could still do it. That's all I'm saying, if you're just calling it RL.
No, but at least it would address the issue that, and, is those residential properties on the lake...
So is anyone prepared for a motion, and then we can have some further discussion?
Well, one thing, we need to have a public hearing, right?
Well, it depends how the commission would like to proceed. The way that this ordinance is drafted is that this is in the general code of ordinance, which requires a first and second reading by the council, but not necessarily a reading by the, excuse me, a public hearing by the commission. The sign ordinance, if you recall, was done the same way. It's not in the zoning ordinance. And to courtesy to the residents and business owners, the commission did opt to have a public hearing held at the planning commission, a regular meeting, in addition to the readings by council, just to make sure that this was fully posted and gave everyone, you know, afforded the opportunity. This would not require a public hearing as presented by the planning commission, but could happen if you were inclined.
Well, if we didn't have one here, village council would need to have one.
Correct.
So it has to be a public hearing someplace.
Yeah, one way or the other.
So it'd be better, I think, to have it here, since we're focused through...
We still have one. Councils still have to have a public hearing.
But a lot of the issues could be hashed out. I mean, you had the two public hearings?
Yes, yes.
Two, not two readings, two public hearings as well.
Okay, so then, the way I understand it right now, is we haven't had, we have had the public hearing for the current ordinance. Yes or no?
No.
Okay. So that still needs to be revised or not. It could be as simple as doing an ordinance that just banning in anywhere except for RL on the lake.
Except that.
Banning it in RL. And lake access restricting short-term rental.
Define it as less than 30 days.
Right, less than 30 days. That could be the amendment, that we could have that the next meeting for public hearing. And at that point, I'd go to village council. So about two months away, and it could be enacted. I make that motion.
I support it.
Moved and supported. Discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One thing, I did have a couple little minor technical things real quick.
Oh, you're recording.
They're just numbers. Well, one, it says here you can't have three violations in a calendar year. I think it should say in a 12-month period.
So it doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter if this carries long-term.
This document is written right now, it's mute.
Until we do something different than this, until we take this back.
No, okay, all right, good, I get, so I can make the change, because there's another issue.
I do, I do think, though, as a planning commission and a village council, we should take Mary's advice and put some parameters around medium and long-term rentals as well.
Right, agreed.
If we're going to be active in one of the three categories, we should be active in all three.
Right, sure, agreed.
Okay, let's move on to item B, Downtown Lake Orient Dumpster Enclosure Analysis Update, number five.
Thank you. Included within your packet, starting on page... Included within your packet, starting on page fifty-eight, is an update to section thirteen point two-one, the text amendment for refuse and recycle receptacles. There has been additional language added based upon the feedback that we received at the April first Planning Commission meeting. And I'll briefly cover those. On page fifty-nine, number six, A six, was added, which requires that waste receptacle shall remain in a clean and orderly state. The village may require the enclosure to be washed and sanitized at the owner's expense. We've also prepared a, some additional material standards in item B, which I'll hold till the end of this and then discuss in further detail. No major change was presented to C, location and placement. A new section, D, this is at the top of packet page sixty, was added for site security and enforcement. Jennifer Neal has been discussing with the police department on some appropriate language for security and illegal dumping and enforcement provisions, and we will present this when available. And we're recommending that the pickup hours are between six AM and nine PM. And then additionally, under section E, the Planning Commission at the April meeting requested some additional information on the process that would follow for the DDA's involvement, and we were recommending that the ordinance read prior to consideration by the Planning Commission, the DDA director must provide a written statement and evaluation for proposed dumpster enclosures located within the DDA district. And then on the following page sixty-one, there is a table on enclosure materials, and we have provided in the left-hand column what the ordinance currently provides. So, for instance, decorative masonry is what's allowed under today's ordinance, and pressure-treated wood gates are allowed. And then the middle column details some alternative materials that we've seen in other communities. And then the far-right column is our recommendation to permit, and there's a scaled system here where there would be a preferred option, and that could go through to simple administrative approval to incentivize. So, for instance, if an applicant came before the village and wanted to erect a new masonry enclosure, we recommend that that would just carry administrative review. But if they wanted to do an alternative material, a secondary option, if you will, then that might trigger Planning Commission approval to make sure that it was complimentary to the surrounding area. And so, that has been defined for both the enclosures and the gates. And I do have a presentation.
I don't know. See, that's what happens. Can you flip those? Go back to the admin table. All right, now go back to the presentations. It's the flash. There it goes. It's a, it's a combination. And the cable conditioner can't figure it out either.
You don't have it on your screen.
One of the screens isn't working.
No, they're both not working.
Okay.
They both don't work?
I mean, they're just in screen saver. It's like being at home.
If you'd like to, would you like to move?
No, that's fine.
Okay. There's only fifteen or so slides. So, this is a comparison of existing dumpster enclosures in the metro Detroit area. This first example here is in Northville Township. You'll see, you can barely notice the dumpster enclosure. It has landscaping, the brick matches, the masonry on the primary building, there's the stone cap, and then if you look closely here, you'll see it even has the stone foundation that runs all around it that matches the principal building. And this is also at eight feet in height, which is one of the recommendations that we're making to the ordinance to increase that height so that you don't see any of the contents behind it. A secondary example of masonry here, also eight feet, matches the building. In this example, there are wood gates as permitted in the ordinance today for Lake Orion. These have been painted. And there's also a latch on the doors, which...
Door's still open.
Helps keep it together, and there's a stone cap as well, a stone sill. This is another example from Royal Oak. There is some room for landscaping, although this hasn't been followed through. More masonry with a stone cap, and this has the concrete apron to avoid deterioration of the pavement, and these are just standard wood gates that you can see have a little bit of wear and tear through the years. Another example in Royal Oak, in this case, the masonry does not have a cap. The, the gates are in better condition. In this case, they painted the masonry to match the building, which is not ideal, as you can tell. This is a more alternative dumpster enclosure material. This is CMU, but it's a decorative and textured block, so it almost has the appearance of stone. And then at the top, you can see more of a polished stone cap that kind of gives it a more finished appearance. The metal gates are also utilized. You can see that when the gates become longer, there's more room for those to be locked open, in part because of their heaviness and just ability to close them. And you'll also notice that this enclosure at six feet in height allows you to see the contents of the enclosure more visible.
This is in whoever's going to do our removal. Is there something that says they need to close the gates one event, because many times they'll open it empty and leave?
That would be something that would need to be negotiated in the contract between, let's say it's Republic or GFL. That would be the, the terms of the agreement. In this case, from Ferndale, this is a typical, just CMU standard block. You can see there's no cap, no decorative finish. There are, or is a security camera located here, and then the gates for this are chain-linked with the mesh finish. Not, not ideal from an aesthetic standpoint. In this case, this is a chain-linked fence that has the slats on all sides. Also not ideal, although in this instance, it has held up pretty well. This is a pressure-treated wood on all sides, and this looks well-maintained and rather new. I think you'll, you'll recall the image that we saw a little bit ago with the wood gates. If they are not maintained and treated over the years, especially in our winter climate, this will not keep the same appearance over time. This is a vinyl enclosure, and just as a pure vinyl enclosure on all four sides for commercial purposes, we don't recommend, as we tend to see these get beat up very fast. This is a, a newer enclosure. In this case, you can see more close-up of the CMU block, although there's no cap here. This has that more textured decorative appearance on the outside. We are recommending this as an alternative material, and it's super, it's especially a more feasible from a cost perspective, but we would not recommend the slatted gates. And then lastly, this is a treated acrylic or a Trex, a little bit more solid foundation, not likely to be dented or harmed over the years, a bit more sturdy, and that is something that we would recommend. And then just as a comparison, these are two dumpsters enclosures in the village of Oxford. You can see that they have provided landscaping around the masonry to, to match some of the buildings, the stone cap. In this case, there's actually two separate masonry barriers, but that this blends in pretty seamlessly. And then this is the dumpster enclosure with the landscaping that you just saw, and this is the other one with the wall, and how these are located in relation to the primary building blocks of the downtown corridor, and in their accessibility for the trash pickup, because that's another item of consideration moving forward, is, is having the DDA work together with the village and those contracts to identify what will be easiest and most accessible for GFL or Republic to access in, in the rear of the commercial blocks. So, what the PowerPoint illustrates, that's the last slide, what the PowerPoint illustrates is that table that's provided on page sixty-one, in that the majority of dumpster enclosures, especially downtown locations, remain masonry. And there's a reason for it, because they are the most durable, they are the most attractive. But if the village is interested in having some secondary options, then we would recommend the textured CMU stone. That could be decorative as well, having, especially having the cap. I'll go back to that example. Having this cap on there gives it a more finished appearance, but also the treated acrylic or Trex, we also would recommend. And then metal or aluminum gates, or the treated acrylic or Trex gates as well, but we would not recommend the chain-linked fencing with slats or alone for any type of gate or enclosure. So, those are the various alternative materials that we've seen other communities utilize, and we're happy to take your feedback on what you would like to see in this ordinance. We will plug that in then to the enclosure design standards, and we would be ready to hold a public hearing on this at the June meeting, and then at that point, it could be recommended to Village Council if found acceptable, so that the DDA could kind of get started on their shared enclosures, and other businesses would be able to maybe utilize some of these more cost-effective building materials. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. So, any recommendations? What do you guys think?
I have a question. So, as I understand it, this was worked on by the DDA as well? The review of the dumpsters, the criteria, the locations, because we're looking to have a multi-use program where businesses are sharing? So, they reviewed this information as well, Molly did, or no?
They're looking at a centralized dumpsters arrangement, yes.
But not reviewing the ordinance content at all?
Well, that's what we already were addressing.
We have provided the draft documents.
Okay, so what was the DDA's recommendation? That's what I want to get to.
They don't have a recommendation, except they wanted to centralize the dumpsters.
Okay, so then what I'm wondering, what I'm trying to say is, we've got a use regulation ordinance. As a DDA, they have no input, because this is gonna affect, I mean, they, they haven't examined a document, it's gonna have an effect on the merchants, correct? And am I...
Are you talking about the design standards or just the location?
Sure, design, I would think the DDA would have comments on that.
Now that we have a recommendation, that we can proceed, because the next step is to draft the documentation subject to what we would prove, have a public hearing, get input, you know, the DDA, you know, would have input.
It's my understanding that Molly has reviewed these and is in the process of drafting comments to us.
Okay, so you want to accept a draft ordinance that hasn't received their comments back yet?
With all due respect, we, we just haven't been provided with those. It's...
Okay. I have a question on the not recommended for material selection. Would they be able to come in and make their case that that's all they can afford? It's not recommended, it's not forbidden?
Certainly, I think if this, if it were not stated in the ordinance, then that would just trigger a variance consideration.
So, they'd have to get a variance to get a material here that's not recommended?
Correct.
If they could, the way this is written?
Correct.
It's not, it's not banned, or not allowed, or whatever.
Correct.
Still, still open that.
I'm not fond, obviously, of wood used or cyclone fence, but I think vinyl products. There is gonna be issues in the downtown area where people aren't gonna wanna tear up a bunch of asphalt to put a footing in to support a masonry container, and believe me, the masonry, I agree, is best. And I may be in the same situation, where I've been looking at masonry, but I'm sitting by the river, and I know that soil is kind of soggy, I don't know what's gonna take a footing to be able to support masonry. So, I just think that we could have a general three or four options, you know, vinyl, and I've actually looked at the steel ones that Scott had recommended. Personally, I didn't care for them, but, you know, if that's a recommendation, maybe vinyl, steel, and masonry, and leave it at that, fairly simple.
And they would be approved individually in the permitting process, correct?
Right.
So, they could make that case on suitable foundation or soil conditions and get a deviation at that point?
Aren't most of them grouped? Aren't we grouping sections of buildings on each one?
Most of them are not.
Going forward, though?
Yes, that's one of the things that the DDA has identified that they, they wanna try and address.
I'm sure there could be some outliers, just because of where businesses are.
Correct.
And the visibility on some of the units versus others.
So, Laura, you're looking for suggestions, right? Not necessarily a motion.
Yes, just suggestions at this point. I mean, we definitely need the DDA's input on this item, that is, that is very important. To move forward with this, we would need to hold a public hearing, at which time any and all comments from, you know, downtown merchants or property owners would also be fully welcomed, and the DDA does have a meeting between our next Planning Commission meeting, so perhaps they've identified to discuss it at that session.
So, are they gonna come back with final recommendations? And we get to say yes, no? What does that look like?
Well, there would be a public hearing, so...
But, but I don't even know what the recommendations are. We got, we got fifteen things up here. I don't know, I would guess that we want to pick two to work in the, in the village. Which two are they? This is my question.
I, I think I could make a motion, although there's not one needed, but to receive and file and to have the cleaned-up draft ordinance for our next meeting with the DDA recommendations. Because you indicated, you said with all due... Because you indicated, you said with all due respect, they haven't given you those recommendations yet. Let's move this ball and let's call for recommendations by next meeting.
Okay, is that another thing?
Yes, sir.
Second.
All right, moved in supportive, any more comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Most curious. Commissioner comments, Ken, would you like to start?
Yeah, I've got a couple, I'll try to be real brief. There's a lot going on in the village. A week back, on one given day, Joe and I were talking and I had counted, there was nine different areas with construction activity going on. All the way from one-twenty Broadway to street repair, sidewalk repair, water, main project.
Horseshoe fence.
The Nita's kitchen, great day. So a lot going on in the community. So everybody, hang on to your hats, be aware. I did want to mention that we had a parking meeting prior to this meeting tonight. And the parking committee is making a recommendation to the DDA about possibly purchasing some other property over by the Methodist Church to incorporate into municipal parking lot plan. And there's a lot of good things going on and we keep a regular track of the enforcement that's being done. We get a weekly report. Things are running smooth with a lot of the changes that we've made. Just wanted to make that comment. Our past president term had expired, Deka Bourbons. I would like to make sure that we send a letter of thank you to her for time served. And there has been one member, a past member, Jim Cummins, who has said that he would like to entertain rejoining the board again. And he's fulfilling an application process. And that may come to fruition, but that's what's currently going on. And so this board will need to either elevate the current president pro temp or pick a new one. And, and I like Mr. Zennick and I think he does a good job. There are some possibilities of a third-party developer, because there's a lot going on, coming in, they're currently negotiating for the PNC building and the property out front on M twenty-four, more to come. But that's just another example of more things going on. Our Phase Two water project is getting ready to kick off over in the central street corridor. It hasn't, it's, they're, they're staging right now, Joe. It's just a matter of a week or so before they start shaking it loose over there.
They started today digging.
Started today.
They had Mistig come out so they could start digging.
And then after that, water main project gets done, then the road will get improved out there because right now it's just capped. And so that's another great thing, but more stuff that's going on. And that's it for me, thank you.
Great. I guess, speaking of running smooth, since we made the recommendation on the short-term rentals, I think it's incumbent on us to, to have Joe, the village manager, reach out to the people who are planning to have short-term rentals and have come before the commission and the council and advise them of the position we've taken and also advise Mary quickly. I expect some, some pushback from the person who made the comment a few weeks ago that he's rented out for the season a house and is planning to purchase another house and turn it into a commercial venture. Don't have a lot of sympathy for them as a, as a potential neighbor but I think it's, it's our professional duty to let him know what we're doing and give him a, an opportunity to react as quickly as he can, whether it's canceling rentals or, or whatever, it's a courtesy we owe them. The second point I have to make is, is also for Joe and that's, this is out even further. But the proposed replacement of Blanche Sims Elementary School based on the school bond, I live in that corner of the village and those roads are not suited to major construction. So I think as the school board gets those plans rolling, whether it's tearing down Noda, building a new school, demolishing Blanche Sims, there's infrastructure that's going to be involved, there's sewer, there's water, there's roads, there's traffic. I, I am personally dead-set against that project but it, you know, I may get steamrolled on it. It's already been voted in the bond in the village. That ship has sailed, I can cry until the cows come home. But that area back there is not suited for major long-term construction. And I think the village needs to have a finger on the pulse of that activity before it gets started. Make sure that we don't get victimized for six months of constructive activity. Thank you, that's it.
First of all, I'd like to say that what I call the brand signing for Lake Orion looks fabulous around the village. It's good locations, good design, can read it well, really terrific. I did have a conversation with Molly on some of your directional signing on how we put people through the city and how we point them. Just an example, coming down Elizabeth, you come to the high school and the sign says downtown to take a look here. It would be better if they took Broadway because they could find parking on both sides and be right in the middle of town and have a light to turn. If you've ever been on the pier and tried to get through there many times today, it's impossible. So I think there's some opportunities to sit back now and take a look and say, are the way finding signs really doing exactly what we want them to do?
Very good. Okay.
Up in the air.
Joe? I, I will agree on the signs. I've lived here twenty years and I just ironically had a conversation, somebody said, why does communities, Metro Parkway, Big Beaver, why do different communities change the names of streets? And someone even, and then they mentioned Lake Orion, not knowing where I lived or, and said, you ever go through Lake Orion? So, yeah, the signs look great. It's better.
But we can make it better yet.
I live here, so I know. But people that come in don't.
And that's the people that we want to fix.
Exactly, exactly, so I, I second that, so.
I will, I will tell you, MDOT had some say so where they were allowed to put some of the signs, so I will tell you that.
I have one more comment, since we're talking about signs. A new gateway sign over in front of Autozone, which I think is a great-looking sign. I'm disappointed that it does not say "The Village of." That is who we are, that's who we're known to be. That is what our taxpayers pay for, is the Village of Lake Orion.
Will that sign be lighted?
Yes, exteriorly.
It's, yeah.
So we're looking into that currently as to what happened.
It's not, it doesn't have LEDs inside.
Just my comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, planning commission meeting, Monday, June third, 2019, seven-thirty, in East Chamber. Move for adjournment?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Good job, Jim.